This is the meeting of the Select Board for January 9, 2024. Before we start, I'd like to move that the Select Board go into Executive Session for the purpose of approving executive session minutes and discussing strategy related to litigation. The litigation matter must be discussed in executive session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation posture of the town and the chair, so declares an executive session therefore to be necessary. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyek?
Aye.
Mary Amash Kanazi?
She's absent.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
And Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we'll be returning to open session.
Recording stopped.
After our executive session is over. You cut off my announcement, Devin.
I don't know, it's illegal now.
We can go live in three.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for Tuesday, January 9, 2024. I apologize for not being with you in person, but I am still recovering from an upper respiratory infection, which unfortunately is aggressively spreading around Brookline. So take your precautions. Unfortunately, Miriam Ashkenazi is not here to elaborate on what those precautions should be, but I'm sure we all know what is prudent for us to do and not do under these circumstances. Anyway, let's start off with announcements and updates, and I'd like to start myself with announcements in a couple areas. First, on Monday, January 15, we will have the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event at the Coolidge Corner Theater. This year's program's theme will be Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Nobel Peace Prize winner, activist, and preacher. The program will include a showing of the video of King's 1964 Nobel Peace Prize acceptance speech. The video will be followed by a reading by Brookline's poet Laurie Jennifer C. Barber of the poem "Praise Song for the Day" by Elizabeth Alexander, which was performed at President Obama's first inauguration and is tied to the messages in King's speech. The main presentation will be given by Boston University Professor of Religion, Dr. Margarita Guillory. And finally, Reggie Gibson and the Guy Mendelola Ensemble will present a performance titled "Different Ships, Same Boat", which elaborates on themes Dr. King used throughout his career and that were also taken up in the Nobel Prize speech. Okay, next, I have two announcements related to the functioning of the Select Board. First, our meeting schedule is posted on our webpage on the town's website. We meet less frequently than we used to because we no longer hold, among other reasons, we no longer hold hearings on licenses and grants of location at the Select Board meetings, although we do vote on the licenses and grants of locations at the regular Select Board meetings. So the hearings are held separately from the actual vote. This is beneficial to the Select Board and, more importantly, members of town staff. The hearings on licenses and grants of location are held during the day and are noticed on the calendar, and if you're interested, you can participate via Zoom. Second, town meeting will be held beginning May 28 and is scheduled through June 6. Beginning on March 12, the Select Board will begin the process of reviewing and holding hearings on the articles of the warrant. You may recall that on February 28 of 2023, the Select Board committed to holding hearings on all articles, irrespective of whether the article is relevant to the Select Board or whether the article is on an important subject or an unimportant subject. So all petitioners will have an opportunity to have their day before the Select Board and have their articles heard, and they will not be subject to the desires or whims of the Select Board or are relevant or important considerations. All warrant articles will be heard. So those are my updates and announcements. Any other Select Board members have anything to say?
I have.
Okay, I think that's Mike.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So Devin, I have a slide. Let's just wait a moment. Well, I'll start with an introduction, introduction anyway, okay? So when we were setting the tax rate towards the end of last year, there were some comments about assessments on single-family homes going up by around, an average of around 10%. And there was a bit of a suggestion that the owner's taxes would go up that much in 2024, and that's not quite right. We're limited to 2.5% overall, and for a specific property, the tax change is lesser or is less or greater than 2.5% depending on how the property differs from the townwide average value increase of 8.1%. And so I'm hoping that there'll be a slide coming here. You want me to resend it to you? Okay. Hang on a second.
Mike, I have an update. Do you want to see if you can get your slide and come back or?
Well, I sent it to Evan and I'm not logged on.
Do you remember when?
Yes. We should have... Hold on a second. I sent it to you, I believe, on Friday. Or no, I beg your pardon, yesterday.
To my town email?
Maybe resend it.
Yeah, I just did.
Are you sending it from your personal email?
I hope not. There we go. Let me make sure that I'm not sending it from my personal email. Yeah, that's the problem. Okay. All right, there we go.
Did you have it?
We can come back to this, I think. Rather than make everybody wait for this, we can certainly come back to it.
So Bernard, why don't I do my update and then maybe we can go back to when we find the slides? Is that okay?
Yeah.
I've got one too, Mike. Bernard, sorry.
Takes the village.
Yeah.
So first, good evening. I wanted to mention that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And, you know, our public safety officers leave their families and homes each day. They put on the uniform and to protect and serve our community. So today's a great day to share your appreciation for members of our police department. Often it just takes a smile or a wave, roll down your window when you're riding by on your bike and say hello. It's not something they often get, and I know that they do greatly appreciate it. In the spirit of appreciation and kudos, I'd like to say thank you for a job well done for the police department's response to an attempted bank robbery that occurred on December 30 at the Citizens Bank located at 315 Harvard Street in Coolidge Corner. Shortly after it was reported, within 30 minutes, our police department located two suspects and took them into custody, and they are actively investigating the incident, so we thank them for their rapid response in keeping our businesses in our community safe. And also, it's an appropriate time because this evening we have, I hope, we will appoint a new provisional police officer is on our agenda. Robert Pierce, probationary police officer who's graduated the academy. So that's exciting on the day of National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So thanks again to each and every member of our police department for their service to our community.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. I've got a bunch of stuff, but I'll try to race through it. There was good news for Brookline this week in that we got the official word that we were among the small number of communities that have been given the go-ahead for what is really a groundbreaking effort to limit fossil fuels now and for the future. And that will roll out, you know, in terms of new construction and major renovations, we'll have to have fossil fuel-free infrastructure. So congratulations to us and to the other communities who have been included in this rollout. And let's all sort of pray that this goes well. Why? Because we also learned this week that global temperatures were hotter in 2023 than they have ever been before. And we are perilously close to this danger zone that is well established by people who have looked into the effects of climate change. And they have set 1.5 degrees centigrade as a, as I say, sort of a warning to us all if there's an increase of that amount in the temperature of the planet. And so guess what? The temperature increase in 2023 was 1.48, 1.48, not 1.5. So we're, these are the most urgent issues of our time. I hope that doesn't sound like too much of a cliche. It's true. And Brookline's part of addressing these issues. So I feel good about the fact that Brookline's addressing them. I feel, you know, a little bit nervous about the fact that the world is heading ever closer towards this danger zone where global warming is concerned. I also wanted to mention in that regard that congratulations are due to a couple of folks who are stepping up as co-chairs of Mothers Out Front, which is, I would have to say, is our leading local volunteer organization working on climate change issues. And that would be Laura Knott and Tracy Burns, who are going to be co-coordinating the Mothers Out Front effort for Brookline. So good for them. Thank you very much. And finally, I want to say something about a great event that Mike and Paul and I and Miriam attended yesterday. And that is the launch of, excuse me, something called Project Pop-Up at 440 Harvard Street in Brookline. And this is a special kind of an approach to vitalization of our storefront areas by taking the occasional vacant storefront and using it for sort of the launch of some entrepreneurial businesses that will get some assistance from the town and some assistance from an organization that actually shepherds startup enterprises through the early stages of launch and growth. And so congratulations to the three pop-up, the three businesses within this pop-up at 440 Harvard Street. And that would be, congratulations to Ismail Mezia, who has Style Me Mama, and Moxiel Beltray, who has 333 Skin and Bath Company, and Shirley Salas, who has Pure Essentials and Company. Welcome to all three of those business entrepreneurs. Welcome to their businesses. And my advice to people who are intrigued by this is to check out the pop-up at 440 Harvard Street. They are not open on Monday and Tuesday, but, you know, look for information about the opening hours for those three businesses in this pop-up at 440 Harvard Street. I'm done.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, so I'll go back to this. As I said, when we were setting the tax rate at the beginning of the year, we had this discussion about the impact on particularly single-family homeowners, and there was some an implication that their taxes would go up potentially by as much as 10%. And maybe I misunderstood that that wasn't in fact the implication, but in any case, I looked at a file that was provided by Han Al-Watowski that includes all of the actual increases in town. And so if you leave out the impact of the 2023 override, the increase in valuations means that more than 96.2% of property owners would see an increase of 5% or less if we didn't have an override. Now, we have an override that adds Now, we have an override that adds about 6.4%. And even there, including that, 82% of property owners will see increases of 10% or less. 67% will see increases of 5% or less. And I think it's important to, to make that clear in case people were concerned that their taxes were going to jump by 10% based on the change in valuation and an increase based on the, on the override. And in fact, while there are substantial increases primarily because of the override, the, the vast majority of property owners don't experience anything like a 10% increase. Only about 3.8% of them do. And those are property owners who have made some major change in the value of their property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other updates or comments from the select board?
Far be it from me to get into a debate, and we won't do that right now. But I, I'm sorry, Mike, I just, having received a bill that is 14% higher, and I hear you out on, on your explanation. But I don't, I don't know what point is made by saying if you leave out the 6% that is added to your tax bill, it's not as much as 10%. And is that the number that is less than 80% of, of bills are less than 10%? If you subtract the 6%?
No, no. If you leave the 6% in and look at the taxes between 2023 and 24, the 82% are under 10%.
I would suggest people look at their bills and they can find out very quickly how much their bills have increased. It's nice to sort of generalize, but I'm hearing from an awful lot of people whose bills are up more than 10%.
Well, 18% of the population, that's true, of the resident.
Oh, it's great. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other updates or comments or announcements, let's move into our miscellaneous calendar.
We're going to take public comment next, Bernard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm sort of out of the loop here. Okay, Devin, set up public comment with the rules and regulations thereof.
Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. We do have a few rules. Each person is limited to three minutes or a total of 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting. At the end of the meeting, if there are additional people interested in making public comment, we can do that at the conclusion of the select board business at the chair's discretion. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer, but are more likely to work with staff offline and get a thorough answer to respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. And when your time is up, please conclude your remarks. The first person signed up for public comment is Fred Richardson. You can approach the presentation station and introduce yourself to the select board. And your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. My name is Fred Richardson. I live at 615 Heath Street. And before that, 325 Cheston Hill Avenue in Brookline. And before that, I was a resident of Portland, Maine, where I served as a municipal official. And not unlike your roles of the elected school committee. And then before that, I was in the state legislature representative from part of Portland. The premise of those two bouts of public service was that the institution that I was part of would obey the law. That we did not create creatures, like the transportation committee, who could violate the law. The town of Brookline, whether it's the town meeting or the town select persons, and I don't know quite the distinction that's in place there, in fact, breaks the law by refusing to accept currency at the space they rent on the street to people who need it. I'm a little bit disabled. There's usually a meter available in front of the bank and another business where I do a lot of business. Every time I go there and find that that meter is available, I try to cram a quarter into the slot, and I cannot do it because it insists that I use a credit card system that I don't trust or have any confidence is treating my privacy appropriately. But more importantly, that machine that you're renting with does not obey state law, which says that you must accept currency, which is also intertwined with federal law, which you couldn't get from the front of a $1 bill by saying that all currency is good for all debts, public and private. You've granted, apparently, the transportation committee the right to walk away from that law because they don't want to enforce it and to put a card system in place that I will not use. The Red Sox tried to do the same thing, and they found out that it was against the law. They now had to spend quite a bit of money establishing reverse ATMs inside Fenway Park. And the attorney general, in what I view as a kind of questionable thing, negotiated off of that concern. But, but you still can't use cash to buy your way into Fenway Park.
You have 30 seconds.
Restaurants. So my point is this. When I was a public official in Maine, one of the key things that I did look at was, was I obeying the law? And if I didn't like or found inconvenient or unjust the law, did I follow the proper procedures of appealing to the state legislature, which I then was part of, to change the law? You've just thumbed your nose at it. The officer weighed my fine for this.
You've reached three minutes.
It was about three minutes up?
Yes.
That was quick. And I religiously held people to this when I did it. I hope you enjoy looking at your mirror on this question about whether the town of Brookline obeys the law.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
At this time, there is one in-person attendee and nine joining us virtually.
Okay, can I, Mr. Richardson, before you leave? Mr. Richardson, before you leave, Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, but I had that same issue with the parking kiosk. And I, I sort of ignored them or boycotted them for many, many months until a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Center Street parking lot with a friend. And, you know, she suggested that we put quarters into the kiosk. And I thought, well, we can't do that. But we went over, and in fact, you can put quarters into the kiosk. Now, maybe that's just on Center Street, but, you know, it is a convenient way to avoid the additional fee for using credit cards and an easy way to quickly. Let me finish to quick, to quickly get a parking space in, in various areas like Center Street parking lot, so.
But I think, I think in this instance, sir, what we will do is we'll, we'll, we'll take that under advisement, sir, and we'll get back to you. We'll look into the specifics of your claim and if you wouldn't mind sending that to us, sir, we would appreciate that. Thank you. We'll take a look.
I've had that experience.
I think, I think.
These are non-functioning meters.
Yeah, it's a jammed meter.
That's the problem. The meters are not being maintained. We've had, this is a big problem.
Okay. No more comments. Let's move on to our miscellaneous agenda, miscellaneous calendar. Let's see. We'd like to make an announcement pertaining to review of the board's executive session meeting minutes from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023 for purposes of disclosure. Let's see, is town council here?
Jonathan Simpson, First Assistant Town Council is here.
Do you want to introduce this or, or address this or?
That's all you need to read.
Okay. So it's, it's in the packet if you're, if people are interested. Okay, next, question of approving the meeting minutes from December 19, 2023 and December 14, 2023. Any questions or edits to those minutes?
Bernard, I have one edit. Actually, I have two, two points on December 19th minutes.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we met in the heating room or the hearing room, but there's a typo in the, in the header.
Sauna.
It proves that I read it. And I just wanted to, two other questions. The comm afkana outstanding HCA, we'd authorized the town administrator to sign that. Has that been executed at this point? So I'm actually, it's good you mentioned, we're just waiting. The, the chair is reviewing now. Once I have the chair sign off, I will sign. Okay, great. But it's all, but that's all taken care of. And then the last question I have, and it's only because it was outstanding in the minutes, the home rule referral back to us, to this board for the water and sewer discounts. Assume this is a question for the town administrator. Are we working on doing that analysis to resubmit the warrant article for the May town meeting? Do we know what the schedule is for that? We have not yet set a firm schedule on that, but I will get back to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Will of the board, we'll make sure that we expedite that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With those edits, any further edits or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, I move approval of the minutes, the meeting, select board meeting minutes from December 19, 2023 and December 14, 2023. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Squire.
Aye.
I see Miriam is here. Mary Mashkanazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, we have, let's see, how many? Items 6C through 6J. Select board members have been, have these, are access to these items before. Any questions regarding any of them that you want to discuss? Okay, seeing none, I move approval of items 6C through 6J on the miscellaneous calendar. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Squire.
Aye.
Mary Mashkanazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. Next, our calendar, our regular calendar. I see that chief pastors in the meeting here. Let's see, so police officer appointment. Question of appointing the following probationary police officer effective upon approval of the select board. I understand that he's been sort of on the job for a while, but not officially and not fully armed. So if there's anything that you need to explain there, please do so. His name is Robert Pierce, and he was appointed before this vote, so chief pastor.
All right, good evening, everybody, and thanks for having me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Warren, for your kind words and acknowledging Law Enforcement Appreciation Day a little bit earlier. So student officer Robert Pierce graduated successfully from the academy last Thursday evening. So it hasn't been too long. He's been in our station and assigned to the training division. With your approval, we would like to move him officially to the status of probationary police officer. The way that the process typically works is you would make that approval. We'll have him sworn in upon the town clerk's return from vacation, and then he can hit the streets officially. So there is still one more step in the process. That'll happen next Tuesday. But Mr. Pierce is 24 years old. He currently resides in West Roxbury with his wife and his one-year-old. He was raised in Rhode Island, graduated from North Kingston High School, served in the United States Marine Corps from 2017, right after graduation from high school, until 2021. His service time included multiple deployments, and he has been awarded numerous commendations, had a very admirable, admirable career in the military. And he's currently a member of the Army National Guard. Officer Pierce, like I mentioned, had been assigned to the training division. Since graduation, has been familiarizing himself with our organization's policies and procedures, getting to know the building, getting to know the town and the way that we operate internally. As I think you all know, our probationary period is 12 months long following this appointment. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board might have. But so far, so good. He's been doing a great job, and all reports out of the academy have been extremely positive.
Thank you. So any questions on the board? I guess I have a question. So it's, it's great that we're adding one more officer to our, to our staffing. How, how many officers now are we at this point?
So we are, if we are fully staffed, we should have 134 officers. We are, we currently have 18 vacancies, although we just started five in the academy on Monday. So 13 vacancies technically, 18 short on the street. Five, that'll be ready to go in about six months.
Okay, so we're slowly, slowly.
We're getting there. We're getting there. Baby steps.
Yeah. Every, every, everything starts with the baby steps. So any questions or comments from the select board? And I'd, I'd like to add to Paul's comments regarding law enforcement appreciation week, particularly here in Brookline. You know, we, we have a police department that I'm proud of, that, you know, I've seen how they operate, the, the quality of their work as well as the empathy they have for the community, not just, you know, the, the, the people with means and, and, you know, privilege, but many members of our community who are, you know, suffering in one way or another. I mean, our, our officers, you know, treat them with the type of dignity that you would expect any human being to be treated with. And, and I think that that is quite commendable. So yes, I agree. This is a day for appreciation of our law enforcement officers, which are, which are, in Brookline, that's only the police department. We don't have any other law enforcement.
We do have, I think constables are included in that.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
We appreciate the constables.
Thank you for that correction. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I move approval of the appointment of Robert Pierce as a probationary police officer in Brookline Police Department. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Squire.
Aye.
Mary Mashkanazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you, chief pastor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a housing trust fund allocation. It's a vote to approve the Housing Advisory Board's recommend, recommendation to allocate $50,000 of the housing trust fund to conduct a feasibility analysis for incentivizing affordable units through zoning. What that means, let me translate it, is to look at the proposed establishment of an affordable housing overlay district. I think it's important for us to, you know, focus on what this is about because it raises a lot of issues that I hope that we, you keep focused on as this goes through the process. So we have before us Jonathan Klein, who is from, out of, who is out of town right now. I, I understand, way out of town. But he's been able to organize the technology to present himself virtually. And, you know, we'll discuss, you know, this proposal. Jonathan?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Green. It's a pleasure to be here, even from so far away. And I am appreciative of the technology that allows me to do that. My name is Jonathan Klein. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 17. I'm a member of the Housing Advisory Board. And I am also chair of the HAB's Affordable Housing Overlay District Study Subcommittee. That's kind of a mouthful, which was created under warrant article 41 of the fall 2022 town meeting. Now, warrant article 41 was a resolution. It was sponsored by three Brookline High School students, and it asked the HAB to set up a subcommittee to study the feasibility of an affordable housing overlay district in Brookline. That would be a district, just to, to be clear, where you would have a special overlay district where you might have certain zoning exemptions or incentives for affordable housing projects that were 100% affordable. The AHAD committee has eight members, and it's now been meeting since April 2023. And those meetings have included background presentations and learning on various topics, including Brookline Zoning 101, learning about Cambridge's Affordable Housing Overlay District, and various updates as we've worked our way through the MBTACA Communities Act proposals as we've learned more about zoning in Brookline. The committee decided that it needed additional financial expertise to advance its work. And after conversations with both Roger Blood as chair of the HAB and Kara Bruton, our director of planning, we decided to approach the HAB for an allocation of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust to hire a consultant for this work. We felt that we had many levels of expertise, but not the financial expertise we needed to understand what would make affordable housing, 100% affordable housing feasible. The HAB recommended a $50,000 allocation at its October 4th, 2023 meeting. The HAB recommended a fifty thousand dollar allocation at its October fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting by a virtually unanimous vote with Bernard Green abstaining, which I believe he does on all the HAB matters that will come before the Select Board. We plan on using a consultant to help answer the following question. And this is key. Assuming a current affordable housing production costs and land values, what new zoning incentives would be necessary to make a hundred percent affordable housing developments as described in warrant Article forty-one feasible in Brookline? And that's what we need financial analysis to help us figure out. So we have drafted a request for proposals together with the Planning Department, and it includes a five-part scope work. And we expect that if you approve this, it could be issued within a few weeks. And then we could get a consultant on board, hopefully within, you know, a number of weeks after that. So the memo in your materials includes the proposed scope of work for your reference. It includes a draft resolution for your consideration. And I am happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Jonathan. Any questions from the Select Board?
Hi, everyone, Bernard.
Yeah, Paul.
Jonathan, thank you. Thank you for joining from so far away. You look like you're right down the street. And, you know, as we've discussed, the need for the important work that you're doing, and I appreciate what you're doing in assisting with the Overlay District Committee. I have two questions. One, how will the, is the financial analysis going to be, you know, kind of general, or is it going to be location-specific, parcel-specific? That's my first question, and I'll have another question.
I don't think it will be parcel-specific, but I think it would be district-specific. For example, it would look at multifamily zones and, you know, what's allowed in multifamily zones, including the floor area ratio and other constraints, and what changes to that might be necessary. It might look, for example, at the New Harvard Street Corridor that we've just established, and say what additional zoning incentives in that corridor might be necessary. So I don't think it will be parcel-specific. I think that would be beyond the funds we have available, but I think it will look more on a on a zone-by-zone and area-by-area basis.
So, so looking at existing zoning in a district and saying what incentives would need to be put in place in order to make a hundred percent affordable housing financially feasible. Okay, and then the second question I have.
For example, if I can just interrupt to elaborate just a bit. For example, if we allow four stories, it might ask if you allowed in this district five or six stories, would that make affordable housing feasible? Or if you allowed an FAR floor area ratio of two-point-oh in a multifamily district, if you allowed two-point-five or three-point-oh or three-point-five, what would be necessary to make a hundred percent affordable feasible? So, yes.
Jonathan, my, my second question is related to the criteria of a hundred percent affordability. So the reason why I ask is I know that Arlington in their MBTA Communities Act passage of their approach in zoning changes, they actually incentivize a developer to add, to increase the percentage of affordable units in a building, in a development, say twenty to twenty-five percent by allowing an additional floor, I think maybe even two floors. Are we restricted by this committee's charge to only a hundred percent affordability? Or are you also looking at ways to incentivize increasing deed-restricted affordability in mixed use or mixed housing, mixed income buildings?
Excellent, excellent question. The charge, which is based on the warrant article that was passed by town meeting, does talk about a hundred percent affordability, although it describes that affordability in in four different tiers, up to thirty percent of median income, sixty percent, eighty percent, and a hundred and twenty percent. A hundred and twenty percent is actually, you know, quite a high number if you look at median income. So it goes up to a hundred and twenty percent, and that is what the the resolution in warrant Article forty-one said. We did add something to the draft request for proposals that said if it turns out that it's infeasible to have a hundred percent affordable housing in, in Brookline, you know, even with significant zoning incentives, what would it take, you know, would it be possible with less than a hundred percent? And frankly, that may vary a bit from the from the resolution, but we thought that was important to see if we could get as much value as we put out of a consultant in terms of giving us direction if if the hundred percent affordability turned out to not be feasible. Does that, does that address your question?
It, it does, and I, I guess I would encourage the committee and for this consultant to actually explore that as an additional option. Because, you know, as you know, getting funding for a hundred affordable, a hundred percent affordable projects is difficult, timely, time-consuming to put those deals together. And if we could find a way to maybe at the same time, looking for a hundred percent affordability, also looking at incentivizing a higher percentage of deed-restricted affordability in our, you know, mixed income type of developments, I think that would be beneficial for the community as well.
I, I appreciate, and we'll look for ways to help the consultants in their work, you know, find ways where we can learn more about that, because I personally, I agree that a hundred percent affordable developments are valuable and ways we can incentivize developments to have more affordable, more affordability is also, you know, highly valuable. So I'm in favor of both personally, and well, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the ultimate decision as to, you know, what level of affordability that goes into our zoning is up to a number of different bodies. We're not locked in by this, this report, so.
This, this will be advice to the Subcommittee, which will then advise the HAB, which will then advise the Select Board, which will then advise Town Meeting. So, yes, it will have many layers.
Yeah. Any other question? Excuse me.
Yes.
See why I'm here in my house, not in the Select Board office or room. Any other questions? It looks like John has his hand up.
Yes, thank, thank you so much. And John, thank you so much for bringing this proposal to us. You know, I'll be honest, I'm worried about this being too broad. I've had a personal experience as Chair of the Lower Boylston Corridor Study Committee of going through the exercise of looking at existing parcels, and of course, that's just, you know, in one small slice of Brookline, which was the section of Boylston Street from, roughly from High Street to Cypress Street, and only the sort of parcels that were adjacent to Route Nine. And it gets very complicated very fast, even looking at a small slice of Brookline as to what the magic formula is for a zoning change proposal that will actually incentivize housing. And that was not even for a hundred percent affordable. You know, that was to incentivize housing that might be, you know, might include ten percent or fifteen percent affordable. And at the end of the day, it came down to not just what is financially feasible to the developer, what kind of height or bonuses would we have to offer, but also what was politically feasible. So does political feasibility enter into this particular study? And I'll narrow that question down a little bit by just citing the example of Cambridge, which is doing their best to come up with affordable housing overlay that is both financially and politically feasible. And what they have right now is the current iteration of that. And by the way, they've, they've not been able to unlock the creation of a hundred percent affordable housing. And so the bidding keeps going up. And now they're at minimum of twelve-foot, excuse me, twelve-story construction or fifteen-story construction, depending on what part of Cambridge we're talking about. So does the question of whether twelve-story and fifteen-story construction would be feasible politically, and if so, where in Brookline? Does that enter into this study?
Thanks for that, that question. I think the short answer is no. The, the, the job for the consultant is to look at financial feasibility, because that's the that's the, the resource and the expertise that the committee feels like it doesn't have. It's really going to be the job of the committee, and then all the committees that come after that to think about political feasibility. So, you know, if the consultant comes back and says it's not feasible unless you do fifteen stories, we might all look around the room and say, well, that seems pretty unlikely in Brookline, right? And, you know, but right now, we're pursuing the path that was laid out by the warrant article. The warrant article was passed by town meeting. It asked us to study this question of an affordable housing overlay, and we need the financial information to see, you know, what those limits are. And I don't know if it's four stories or six stories or eight or ten or twelve. I really, I really don't. I really hope it's a lot less than that. I don't know the details of the financial calculations that have gone in Cambridge, although I've been following it to some extent. But we are not asking the consultant to make political judgments. I think that's the job for the elected and appointed leaders in Brookline.
Miriam, and by the way, Select Board members, could you use the hand raised sign like Miriam's doing? So that I see that you're, that you want to speak.
Thank you. I, I think you ask, you make a good point, John, but I agree. I think for me, that's us, right? We have to decide the political feasibility and eventually town meeting. So I think this is just the information gathering you need to be able to make those kinds of decisions. But that said, I just really want to get on record saying how important it is for us to do this because Richard Rothstein's latest book, I don't know if you all came when he was at the TVZ, you know, he, he very explicitly says, if you really want an equitable community, if you really want diversity in your community, you have to have, the very first step is zoning reform. Zoning for, for centuries was used as exclusionary practice. And so this is where we start when we want to do inclusion. So I really appreciate that we're having this discussion. I appreciate this this, that we are talking about zoning reform. So, thank you. This has my support.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's see, what do we, what are we voting on? Let me, let me find it. Okay, I move approval of the Housing Advisory Board's recommendation to allocate fifty thousand dollars of the Housing Trust Fund to conduct a feasibility analysis for incentivizing affordable units through zoning, specifically the proposed Affordable Housing Overlay District zoning. So that a good statement of the issue? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Mashkenazi?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for your approval, and we will be back to you, hopefully, once we have the consultant's work, and we can then integrate it with our own work and come up with some recommendations and, and get back to you. So thanks for your, your support.
We'll see then. Okay, next, Boards and Commissions, interviews. We have interviews for membership on the Economic Development Advisory Board, and isn't there another one? Devin?
Just EDAB for this evening.
Okay, I thought I saw something else, but never mind. So as I understand, with the Select to EDAB with Mark Baer, is, Mark, are you available for interview?
That's me, yeah.
Okay. You're, you're in person.
I am. I live around the corner, so I'm lucky.
Yeah. Okay, Mark, please introduce yourself and your background and why you would like to be and should be appointed to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Sure, well, I guess thanks for having me here tonight. Mark Brewer, live over right at Emerson Park. And I would think, you know, some of the reasons I want to serve in the board are really kind of focused twofold. One is personal. You know, I, I love Brookline in that I think it's one of those urban neighborhoods that's really special, right? And I've by what I do professionally, I'm in commercial real estate, architect by training. I've worked in Somerville, Cambridge, City of Boston, et cetera, kind of just talking about the same stuff you guys were just talking about. And just I'm familiar with kind of the inner workings of how things get done or not. So I think on a personal level, I care about what happens in Brookline, and on a professional level, it's kind of what I do every day, something I'm very kind of personally passionate about and interested in, and just kind of given my background, skills, and experience. You know, I think I could kind of add a lot to the discussion.
Okay, any questions from the Select Board? Let's see, Paul, stand up.
Yeah, thank you. Could you elaborate a little bit more on your skill? So architect, could you, you know, give some examples of how maybe you've helped other communities in your professional career? Deal with, you know.
Absolutely.
Commercial, so two quick questions for that, and then the second is, what ideas do you have given, you know, our current constraints in Brookline? We're pretty much built out. Where are the opportunities to, you know, increase, you know, economic, our economic tax base, frankly, commercial tax base in Brookline?
Right. So just across the board, I've worked in kind of hotels, office, retail, residential, so have all of all asset classes. I'll cite one example that I worked on. It's a nineteen-story tower in Cambridge, right? One of the and I would say Cambridge is one of the most sophisticated and savvy kind of professional planning departments around, right? And they're frankly, they're tough, but they're a joy to work with, and that you know exactly what they want. And they're also very realistic and pragmatic about how to get things done. So I was very specifically involved in a density height bonus project, right, that went from twelve to nineteen stories, went from twelve percent affordable to twenty percent affordable, and worked through all the affordable minutia as to where do the affordable units occupy, where do they live, right? How much go offsite, how much go onsite? Really kind of working through the economics and the performa modeling as to how and why and where, you know, these projects get done. Specifically, this one is Mass and Main. It's right in Central Square. And after kind of eighteen months of working through the community, and it was sort of interesting to hear this discussion, like, I would almost argue that politics and economics are inextricably linked, right? And that, like, you can in order for the political solution to be there, there's always economics attached to it. So I think just having the experience in places like Somerville, Cambridge, in specific projects, be able to kind of help maybe advance the cause here. Why does a developer come here? What are the economics? What are the incentives for that? Are there just, are there tax incentives, right? Hopefully, specifically working on the city of Boston right now with Chief Planner Jemison, and working with what does it mean to do a density height bonus and a tax break, right? And using those different tools that incentivize developers to move forward.
Bernard, can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So I appreciate that, that answer. So it seems like you're more talking about residential development than you are about commercial development. Now, EDAB, right?
Right, so that was the residential component, right? So I've also done kind of the hotel or retail, right? What does it mean to incentivize kind of the whole ground floor plane? And hotels in particular, I know.
So where do you think the opportunity is in Brookline? So how long have you lived in Brookline?
Ten years.
So ten years. So you've been around long enough to know where, where things are, where the, you know, what space is available. Where do you think, where should we be focused in Brookline to increase specifically our commercial tax base?
Yeah, I mean, it's where the MBTA Communities Act is, right? It's up and down the Harvard Corridor, right? I mean, I think that's sort of the natural, it's where the T-stops are, it's where the, the commercial base is. It's where density already exists, you know, to some extent, and I think there's lots of opportunity to increase some height up and down the Harvard Corridor.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Select Board?
I mean, I I found, I, I, I have my computer, I Googled you. I can find your LinkedIn, but I found your Senior Vice President Development, B Mac New England, and that's quite, I mean, you're quite an extensive, is that you? It looks like you.
At B Mac, well, I'm in Lenleys right now. It was at Berkeley Investments, twenty properties.
Is this it? Yeah.
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah. It's, it, I would have, I don't know why usually your resume is included, and I didn't see it, but I could have just not seen it, but I mean, it's a very impressive, you know, your BA from University of Wisconsin, your Master of Architecture from University of California, Berkeley, your MSRD from Columbia. But really, you have quite an extensive history of working with lot, large buildings. I mean, I think, I think that there's something to add. So I, I'd be interested to see what your take is on exactly what Paul was talking about.
Yeah, and I've just, who actually recommended me, Sandy Silk, who I've worked with on a professional basis, so she said it's a great opportunity, great way to, you know, contribute, because in Brookline is, it's kind of right at the crossroads right now, right? There's a lot of stuff on the table, a lot of stuff to decide, so I'd love to be involved. It's an exciting time, and I think, you know, just being part of the process would be just a great opportunity, so.
And Devin, I understand that we have vacancies.
We have two.
Oh, we have two.
Bernard, do you mind if I follow up with one more question?
Sure, John.
It's John. Uh, and, and Mark, I just want to say, I think we're incredibly fortunate to, people of your caliber have applied for this position and I think EDAB is, is so important because of the focus on the commercial part of the tax base. Um, and that doesn't mean it's exclusively focused on the commercial part of the tax base, but that to me is the most important part of what it does, just because we need so desperately to grow our, our commercial tax base. But, um, getting, getting back to, and, and I thought you gave a very honest answer about, you know, where, where is the like greatest likelihood of, of progress? Um, and you, you answered, you know, the transportation corridors and you cited Harvard Street in particular. But as you know, we just went through an exercise in compliance.
Yep.
And I, I'm not sure whether I heard you correctly, but might there be a suggestion in what you said that we didn't go far enough? With, with our heights, um, in, in, on Harvard Street to incentivize development? Putting you on the spot. And if you want to say unfair.
No, I, I love talking about this stuff. Um, well, I guess two points, right? To talk about commercial, right? When I think about what is the hotel and office? And I remember talking to someone who was at Regis in Coolidge Corner and said, you know, um, there was just not enough space here. This is back before the, the current office issue, but I wish I had the opportunity to expand, right? There's just not enough kind of good desirable office space here. Um, and that's just all kind of, it's sort of junky, you know, on a second floor stuff. There's, there's nothing that um, a startup could sink their teeth into here, right? And I think there's just such a fantastic, um, you know, fertile ground, right? A lot of, a lot of smart people here. Um, and I think just providing that as, as a basis, incubators, right? I think could be, you know, fantastic use here and hotels as well, you know, people, a lot of people want to be here. Um, but the height, I would say, I'm coming from kind of the, the whole comprehensive background of the urban planner, architect, developer. What, what will drive and incentivize a developer, right? Is that can I get scale, right? And it's really difficult if I'm going to put 20% affordable units, right? If I don't, if I can't cross subsidize that with more market rate units. And you can't do it in three stories. You just can't. So, so I think when we're talking about affordable housing, right? In order to really achieve and accomplish those goals, you got to think pragmatically about the economics. And, and that is, can you get the incentive to cross subsidize the affordable with the market? And if you can accomplish that, I mean, it's, it's, it becomes like an impossible task to say, I'm going to cap height and density, but I want 50% affordable, it just doesn't work. No one's going to bite, no one. And so, yeah, so I, on a personal level, I would say, those density height bonuses are, are all, all the carrot that, that will drive development. And if there is no carrot there, not sufficient carrot, there will be no bites. So yes, I think it didn't go far enough.
I, I, I want to say, I think you're telling us what we need to hear and I appreciate that a lot. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if I may just add maybe a comment and you can respond to it. You said something that I haven't heard. Uh, I'm sure someone has said it, but I haven't, don't remember hearing it from anyone else when we're talking about economic development. And that is that there are a lot of smart people in Brookline. In many communities where there are a lot of smart people, like Cambridge, like around military installations or like the Pentagon, um, you know, you have those smart people creating startups that become huge companies. Um, we don't see that in Brookline, or do we? I mean, I, I haven't noticed it. And what is, what is preventing our smart people from, you know, creating that type of economic growth that you see in so many other communities around the country?
But I think, I, I think that it's exactly right. And I think it's creating a fertile ground and that, that creates a private-public partnership to be able to drive that. I think Somerville is a great example. When you look at Assembly Square. Somerville had said enough with the resi, right? We don't want that. Um, I'm sick of being a bedroom community. I want tax revenue, I want tax base. Um, they had very specific commercial districts and zones they set aside, opportunity zones, right? So call it Assembly Square, Union Square, um, and made a tremendous success, public-private partnerships, private developers. And, you know, look at the outcome, right? I think Union Square, what it's turning into and um, Assembly Square is just fantastic outcomes. So I think, you know, it comes again back to the political will, right? Like if, um, both on the side of the public, but I think it really comes from the leadership of the government to maybe help inform the outcome, um, to be able to, to create those right incentives, to create those commercial districts, be it with hotel, retail, office. Because right now there's such a bias towards, you know, we're a resi-only community or we're a bedroom community, but I think there's some PR that needs to happen. Um, and I think there's, you know, some, some ways in which we can start to coach that, that process to where it has been historically.
Bernard?
Yeah, Mike.
Um, so, uh, I, um, we hear a lot about Somerville, uh, and its success. And I think it's important to remember that Somerville had um, the remains of a Ford Motor plant
Right.
on the site. And we don't have anything like that. Uh, and I think it's, while I absolutely take your point and am very much in favor of identifying areas where we can have substantial commercial development, it's very difficult to put the land together for that in Brookline, much more difficult, much more difficult than it is in Somerville or for that matter in, in Newton, which had, you know, developed, uh, out on the Hanton Road, uh, substantial office park uh, and along 128. So, um, I, 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 I think we have to be cautious about what we can, what we, not what we can try to do, but what, what are, we have to recognize our limitations uh, and try to work around those limitations.
So a couple of things, 100% agree on the pragmatic lanus of that, but I guess what I'm, I'm trying to describe or insert, what does it mean to change our mindset, right? What does it mean to, because right now there's a mindset of Brookline is this, you know, we are who we are.
Oh, right. Okay.
But what does it mean for the leadership to start to like coach that along for this? So there's public benefits and incentives, right? So it's.
Right. So I, I do think that at least the select board you're looking at now, um, there has been a change in mindset. We were
Yep.
strongly behind the change in zoning on Harvard Street, all five of us.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, we were all very, very interested in requiring commercial on the ground floor, recognizing that that was an important thing to do. Um, so I'm hoping that town meeting will follow that lead.
Right.
Uh, we do have that complication where Somerville does not.
Right.
But, uh, uh, it, I do think that there's been a recognition that if we're going to mitigate the kinds of, of residential tax increases that we've seen and reduce the need for overhead, for overrides, uh, we're going to have to have substantial commercial development somewhere here.
Right. And I just think, if I could just add one more item.
Yeah.
The, the proposal for the Life Science Building here, you know, right down on Route 9. Um, and I'm currently building a Life Science Building.
Yep.
Um, you know, half a billion dollar, 355,000 square foot building. And I think what's sort of interesting is lessons learned, I was in Brighton. And just the amount of, to get the community on board, the amount of community, I would say programming, the amount of, of community, um, interaction, the amount of what, what are the community benefits? Kind of across the board so that everyone can support it, right? So I think it's like, when you're building up the commercial, what does the public-private partnership do to get everyone's buy-in, right?
Yep.
So it's not just us versus them, right? And I think it's, that's where that one missed, right? And I just kind of watching it evolve, but I just think.
It's, it's actually a great point. You know, we, we're very good at selling housing. We're, I think we've gotten pretty good at convincing the community that we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. But I don't think we've done a great job at convincing the community that we need more, you know, uh, thoughtful discussion and ideas around commercial development. You know, and even with your conversation, you propose, you were talking about in bonus heights. It seemed like it was bonus sites around affordability. We could also have bonus sites around commercial. How do we get commercial on the second floor or the third floor? Um, you know, other, other bonuses there. So um, I, I think that there's a tremendous, um, opportunity to educate the community more about the benefits of a strong commercial tax base in Brookline. And, you know, I think that would be really helpful. And it, and it does take quite a bit of conversation and engagement with the community.
Right. And it's offering, you know, what are the infrastructure perks and Bennys of doing this, right? Just so that, oh, build, put up new streets, put in new parks, put in new gardens. There's, there's projects planting 200 trees. Whatever it is, there's, there's lots of like great PR that can come from it that I've been personally involved with. So anyways.
Let me add one thing before Chaz, um, who has his hand up speaks. Mike, uh, you know, Somerville had the auto, um, manufacturing site, but you know, Brookline, the turn of the last century had a huge and, and very active auto manufacturing sector on Station Street and elsewhere. And, you know, maybe the issue is not so much, you know, what resources we have versus Somerville, but what intellectual, um, um, resources we have in terms of looking at creative ways of, of using what we have.
Fair comment. Yep.
So, I mean, I just phrase that because, you know, people don't realize that we were the Detroit of, um, the muddy river.
Well, uh, sort of like the world's tallest widget, but okay.
Right.
Mike, I, I, Bernard, I'd want to say one thing because I, I think there's a point. Mike said something that I think, um, I just want to reemphasize. He said that this board has come together to help champion, um, you know, growth and development, our commercial corridors and mixed use with commercial on the first floor. Um, and to a person, we agreed to that. Um, we do have a comprehensive plan process that's coming up. We've got a housing production plan, which we're putting the final edits on, I think, before we're going to prove it probably the next week or so. There's a lot coming together, um, you know, and, you know, maybe we need to think uh, differently about economic EDAB isn't just commercial development, it's economic development, it's community development. Maybe we need to start thinking a little bit differently about it. So you've helped me in that regard. Thank you.
Sure.
So, uh, we expect you to use your creative ideas when you're, uh, assuming we, and that, uh, point you to EDAB to come up with some, uh, new ways to address issues of economic development here in Brookline. Uh, Chaz, I'm sorry, you, you had your hand up?
No, I was just going to say, you know, the next, uh, next team up, uh, in discussing the linkage fee, um, but in other contexts is the Planning Department's Economic Development Team. And I think one of the big era, big questions, and you know, they work with EDAB very carefully to ensure that we are focused on these questions, which really go to the heart of how the community grows and thrives. And so it is really important as for EDAB, I mean, you know, we, the, John talked about this pop-up that opened up. Very exciting, you know, one new thing, uh, and one of the co-chairs of EDAB was Ariane Myers, who was really a champion of this. There are lots of different projects, irons in the fire currently that I think that it would be helpful to have from, you know, guidance from the community on what to prioritize and how to champion these things. Things ranging from, uh, Business Improvement District in Coolidge Corner to the Chestnut, redevelopment of Chestnut Hill West, which I think is going to provide that, but has the potential to provide that kind of incubator space that you're talking about. So there's, there's a lot out there. There are a lot of irons in the fire. And so it would be, it's really helpful for us on staff to hear from EDAB and from the select board about the prioritization of that and the, the guidance in order to make sure that it moves forward and doesn't get stuck in neutral, um, based on, you know, uh, just a, a, a process that, that grinds it to a halt. So those are really important things for us on staff to hear from elected and appointed officials so we can better serve the community.
Great. All right. Put me in, Coach. Ready? All good?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
We, we
You should stay and listen to her.
Yeah.
The board, the board doesn't vote on the same night usually.
Yeah, Bernard would have told you if he was still on, but, uh, thank you for your interview and we're going to, uh, we voted a later date. So, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
We lost them.
We lost them. So let's, uh, John, you're, you're the next.
There we go.
Linkage fees.
Yeah.
Do you want to take a brief pause and here, get Bernard up or do you want to proceed?
Let's keep, let's keep rolling. We're onto linkage fees.
I guess, I guess we should keep rolling. Yeah, because we have no way of knowing how soon it'll be. Um, yeah, so, uh, we, we are up to item number 11 on our agenda.
Respect to Bernard, maybe we should wait and let's see if we can rejoin.
Whatever, whatever.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't.
I'll go with the flow. What is the flow?
Well, it's, it's, it's 6:40. Should we wait two minutes and see? Give him, give him some.
A break wouldn't hurt.
Thank you for the picture.
Thank you for your patience, Meredith.
You coming?
We'll see. Yeah, we'll see.
I'm having a devil of a time with, uh, Wi-Fi here.
Oh, usually kicks me off, but so far I'm on TM secure.
It, it doesn't kick me off, but it doesn't let me go anywhere.
Oh.
We lost you.
Yes.
Okay, he's, he's, he's trying to come back. To the back end.
Okay, another apology. I apologize. My power cord was loose, uh, which I didn't notice and it suddenly decided to just crash. My computer decided to crash. So I'm back in though, and power cord is tightly in the hole. So, um, okay, we're, we're talking about the linkage study, phase two presentation. Meredith, have you started the presentation or?
Not yet.
Okay, well, go for it.
All right. Good evening, Select Board. Meredith Mooney, Economic Development Director. Tonight, I'm presenting an update on the linkage fee nexus study. So just a, a quick recap. The Select Board has heard about this project a few times over the course of the past year. A little over a year ago was the first time we initiated with a, a conversation with the Select Board about, um, exploring the possibility of, um, developing a recommendation for a linkage fee program that would be associated with, um, any future commercial development in Brookline. In order to develop a policy proposal, um, we would have to go through the exercise of a nexus study, the contract, full scope of that was approved by the Select Board in July. There was the requirement built in, um, with that proposal that, uh, that the contract be bifurcated and that we come and check in after the end of phase one and get the go-ahead from both the Housing Advisory Board and the Select Board before proceeding to phase two. Um, Housing Advisory Board's involvement, um, we're utilizing Housing Trust funds, um, for the purpose of the study. So we did back in late December, get the, um, sign off from the Housing Advisory Board to proceed with phase two. We're providing updates to the Select Board, um, and our recommendation at the staff level informed by, um, a working group made of EDAB and Housing Advisory Board members as well as town staff to advance to the second phase. So, a link or nexus study, just to recap, demonstrates the connection between, uh, commercial development and housing availability and affordability. It provides a framework for developing a fee proposal that would be appropriate. Um, and it also provides a, an important legal reference point for justifying the application of a linkage fee to any commercial development. So if we, um, at the end of this process, decide to move forward with a linkage fee proposal, it would require submitting a home rule petition. Um, and then would have to come back to the town, um, to be approved again. So it's, it's a lengthy process. Phase one, which we've completed, uh, as of the late fall, uh, I think as we embarked on this study, there was sort of this question of will Brookline, you know, with over the course of the next decade, even have enough non-residential development to justify investing the time and expense, um, of thinking through a potential linkage fee, uh, in that policy program. So, um, the objectives for phase one were to really develop projections about future commercial development uh, uses and the employment impacts associated with that. And then to, uh, determine, you know, based on what's in our commercial development pipeline, is there going to be uh, sufficient affordable housing demand associated with? sufficient affordable housing demand associated with that anticipated? Those are commercial projects. So at this point, and we're working with the consultant Carl Seidman and our staff-led working group, EDA and have them have members along with town council. So at this point, we do feel that there is the justification. There's enough anticipated need for local affordable housing based on what's in the commercial pipeline to advance to phase two, which is where we kind of get into, I would characterize as the good stuff. I think, you know, the questions that the Select Board asked a year ago when we first started talking about this. I think everyone is generally very supportive of finding additional resources to help support affordable housing in town. But there's concern about, you know, at what expense to our reputation and implications in terms of commercial development potential, which as our previous conversation during EDA interview is something that we really need to focus on. So the second phase, if we decide to proceed with that is about $40,000. There would be the process of sort of developing an appropriate linkage fee proposal, analyzing the impacts of a potential linkage fee on development potential, and then proposing some different policy options for consideration. So this is just a quick overview of the activity of the staff-led linkage fee working group, which has been very helpful in thinking through next steps and working with our consultant. The conclusion is that based on what's currently in the commercial development pipeline, we anticipate that over the course of the next decade, about 370 jobs will demand local housing within that 370, about 180 would require affordable housing. So key questions that will be explored in this next phase are listed here. I think they're very, they reflect the questions that were asked by the Select Board back in our initial discussion about this in December of 2022. So at this point, we do feel that it would be appropriate, a good use of everyone's time to continue working with Carl Seidman to dig a little bit deeper and to develop some policy recommendations that we can discuss further. So with that, the next steps, as I said, we went to have back in December, we're presenting our recommendation regarding phase two to the Select Board this evening. The goal would be to complete the rest of phase two by the end of, you know, probably late spring, early summer and be able to work through some policy recommendations in time for a fall 2024 town meeting home rule petition if we do, if there is consensus around a linkage program policy proposal. So we have some suggested motion language and happy to take any questions.
Bernard, I have a, I have a question.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I was muted. I have a comment I want to make. You mentioned that the projected development would result in in 182 affordable housing units demanded or demand for 182 affordable housing units. However, in this, in the materials, it talks about those affordable individuals working in the service industry and presumably in medical research facilities that you know, suggested, you know, we would be looking at in the future. Those aren't, those are just temporary individuals. I mean, they're, they're students who are here and are taking those jobs while they're in school. They're, they are medical researchers who are here and making very low money until they break into the high income brackets. So I'm not sure that that is necessarily relevant to the number of affordable units we need, but it is relevant to whether there's a nexus between the development that we're talking about and the demand for affordable house, affordable housing units.
So I'm sorry, Bernard, but was there, was that a question?
Well, maybe asking for a comment. And, and, and the, you know, the, the issue I'm raising is whether, you know, saying whether you can, you can connect the, let's see, what am I saying? What, what, whether the fact that development will produce jobs for people in the lower income, income brackets is relevant, given that those individuals are typically going to be temporary residents of Brookline. So you're not really addressing our, our long-term, you know, need for affordable housing.
Sure. I understand the question. I would. So also confession, Victor Panac, our former economic development planner, was spearheading this initiative. And so I'm sort of picking up where he left off and don't know the material like the back of my hand at this point. So I will circle back with our consultant. I think that's really a question about the methodology. And I know that this has been a methodology that's been applied in other neighboring communities and developing their linkage proposals. So I can certainly relay that to him and get back to you Chair Green with sort of his response about, you know, to what extent those jobs would really convert or we can imply the need for affordable housing based on that.
And, and it's also a legal question because the nexus that we're talking about is, you know, was developed out of legal cases. And so, you know, we, it had, it, well, you understand. Okay. Paul, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I have just a question. So Meredith, first, thank you for your presentation. I know you're picking up for Victor, who was, was doing this for a while. And it's always difficult to pick up midstream. I first, I want to be transparent. I'm unsure about this. And I'm, I'm going to ask for your help. The first is, I feel like the, the, the market currently thinks the best use of our land is to build housing. And, and we're seeing the greatest demand for housing. And it seems to me that the best opportunity to create additional affordable units is to leverage where the investment is coming in today, which is essentially housing development. And we did that with the Harvard Street proposal by requiring, you know, that all units be built on site. So I feel that, that there is a connection to the housing production plan. There's some strategies in the housing production plan to increase the number of affordable units, having some hard metrics for the percentage of affordable units that we have, real deed restricted affordable units. So I, I guess the first thing is, are we, are we looking at that as a way and how that relates to the, to the linkage fee? And then that's the first question. The second question is, you know, they're, they're not beating down the doors to do commercial development in Brookline right now. Whether we're not enabling it, whether we're too hard to, it's too expensive, I'm not sure. And to add fees, linkage fees to commercial development. I just, I'm, I'm not sure if that's, if that makes a lot of sense for a community that really wants to increase commercial development. It seems like it would maybe dampen it, but I, I'm not deep into the subject. So that was my second question. Do you want to, Mike, do you want to answer the question?
No, I want to add to it.
Marion had her, her hand up. So Meredith, do you want to respond? And then John Barry would.
Sure. So the, regarding the first question about sort of how does this work intersect with housing production plan, I do think that, and I know we're putting finishing touches on that document, but I do think that the linkage program or exploring that will be included as a potential strategy and tool for expanding, supporting affordable housing in the HPP. And then the second question, I completely understand those reservations, and I think those are questions that we continue to hear within the staff working group at, that we're very aware of from the beginning of this project, the Select Board articulated when we first started this conversation a year ago. I don't, I think that phase two and continuing to move through this process with the support of our consultant will help provide a really helpful point of reference and framework for drilling down on those questions. You know, I think that we can, it would just be helpful if we're talking more concretely about appropriate fees and then, you know, anticipating what the impact would be and just really having some more concrete analysis to help answer your second question.
Okay, Marion?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I thank you, Meredith, and I want to say a couple of things. I think, I think first, Bernard, to your point, we're talking about 367 new jobs expected to demand housing in Brookline, looking at slide one, page 142, slide number, we have 142 of our packet. And I think it's, I mean, it's important, but a little bit irrelevant, whether they're transitory or not, because we just know we need more affordable housing in, in, in Brookline. Period. Whether it's 367 here or somewhere else, we, we need it. So.
My, my concern was the connection between the, the actual production from a linkage fee and then the housing demand.
So I'm getting, yeah.
Yeah, I agree that we need housing irrespective, but I think that there's an issue, there's a legal issue there that that can't be ignored.
I, I, okay, I grant you that nuance. I just think, okay, I'll grant you that nuance. It didn't come across in your comments. So I appreciate the clarification. To Paul's point, I think there is a legitimate tension between improved, expanded, commercial tax base, which we all want, and affordable housing. And I, I like to hope, although I don't know for sure, that there is a sweet spot where we can, with potentially with linkage fees, not deter commercial development and still get some return on it in terms of affordable housing. So all I, all I'm hoping for is that we approve the second half of this study. So we could get an answer to that question because I think that's the, that is the question, right? Is there a sweet spot? Because otherwise I think, yeah, we have this real tension that we need both of these things. How do we prioritize them? But I think we need the information to be able to make the decision.
Bernard?
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry.
So a long time ago, a couple of decades ago now, I did consulting work for this, the state of New York when Governor Pataki replaced Mario Como. And Governor Como had reputation of being anti-business and Governor Pataki came in on a platform of being very much in favor of business. And one of the things that had happened during the Como administration that got Governor Pataki headed in the direction that he did was that the Corning, Corning Glassworks in Corning, New York had proposed to build a major new facility very close to its headquarters. And the state of New York had said, well, if you're going to do that, there's some, some adverse consequences. There's going to be more traffic. And so we want you to rebuild this highway for us. And Corning said, thank you very much. And they moved the plant out of state. So you really have to be extremely careful. And so there's, in an environment where there are other choices, and Corning had a substantial incentive to locate that plant close by. They're, they had a trained workforce in the area and so forth. But they, they almost made, it was almost a political decision. They were insulted. And I think on page 130, there's a slide that says, it's a very interesting thing. It says, Brookline prevents, presents a very difficult environment for development. Zoning is not aligned with feasible scale and uses. Long, costly and unpredictable process for rezoning and approval. Cost of negotiated developer commitments. Neighborhood and individual opposition can derail projects. Lack of public safety and health framework compares life science development. Okay, we, that, that may be soluble, but some of these, the other four, these are political. And I think we, I, when I read this, I thought, really? We want to extract something from, from developers in order to do something that we're desperate for? And honestly, I'm, I'm, okay, let's finish the rest of the, the study. We've embarked on it this far. But then let's take a very careful look at what it's telling us and what we can see from the marketplace and make up our minds whether there is some sort of linkage that's feasible.
So, so Mike, I, I appreciate, first, I appreciate.
Let him finish.
Well, I know, I, I, I'm done. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't drop my voice, but thank you. Yep.
So Bernard, it's one of the follow-ups. So first, I appreciate both Marion and Mike's comments because you know, they're, they're kind of two sides of the, of, of, of the coin that I, that I had presented. You know, certainly we need, we absolutely need more affordable housing. And again, the, the, the greatest and best use right now, according to the market, is to go build housing in Brookline. Like very expensive housing. And we need to make sure that we're getting a lot more, you know, deed restricted affordable housing. I do worry about this sweet spot that, that Marion, that you are mentioning, you know, because most of our development right now is first floor commercial. Matter of fact, that's what we were incentivizing along Harvard Street. And I can imagine we're going to ask those folks to give us a linkage fee. It just, I don't know. I just, it, it would seem to hinder and inhibit the, the exact type of development they were trying to bring into the, into the community. I, I think this was approved before the original study. When did we approve the original study?
Last. About a year ago, right?
A little under a year ago.
Oh, it's, okay. So this was before my, because I.
Yeah, it was right before you.
I didn't remember approving this when she said the line. Yeah. So I, I just, I'm hesitant to, to implement. And I understand there's, we're going to spend some more money, but I, I'm not even sure. I might abstain. I'm just not sure I even want to throw any more money at this thing to, to have a linkage fee on commercial, the, the very thing that we're so desperate to have at Brookline is a, a bigger commercial tax base. I, I don't know. The linkage fee seems to be, be a disincentive. That's just my, how I'm currently thinking about.
Yeah, I, I think the materials, you know, acknowledge that, you know, smaller businesses are not an appropriate target for these linkage fees. So clearly, you know, we're not, we're not going to impose linkage fees on, you know, first floor mom and pop stores. And I think that, that there, I mean, there are a lot of other issues associated with this, but I don't think that's one of them. And, yeah, anyway, Marion?
I just want to directly respond. Paul, if you go to page 132, it's very specific because I think it's a totally legitimate concern, but the potential sites are things like Waldo Durgen Hotel, the Office Park, Herb Chambers Porsche dealership. These are, so I'm just saying.
They're big, they're big.
They're not, so they have excluded the mom and pop.
No, no, I know that, but I'm just, but I'd want to, I'm actually thinking, what incentive can we bring them to go develop the Waldo Durgen site or as opposed to charge them more?
Two of these are BU, right? So I, I just feel like, again, there's a lot of, yes, maybe in the end we don't advance it, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions for me before we make that decision. I would like to see BU. I'd be happy to have BU pay a linkage.
Mike?
Yeah. So the, the, but, but, but looking at, looking at, at, at 132, at page, at slide 132, Boston University is developing land that it owns. They're locked into that land. Okay. And the same is true of Herb Chambers. They own that property. So they could sell it certainly, but they look at it as part of, you know, they have a couple of other dealerships in the area. Again, there's a certain critical master managing those dealerships. So you might be able to, to extract a linkage fee there, but the, what we're looking for is new development from new developers. We're looking for somebody to come into town, not to somebody, you know, BU is, you know, just fine if they'll pay a pilot and, and pay, and pay a linkage fee, that'd be lovely. But that's, to me, that's not the focus of what we're really hoping for.
So you, are you, you seem skeptical. I'm not sure. I'm trying to figure out where you're at.
Oh, I'm very skeptical.
We should all be skeptical. I'm skeptical too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very skeptical. That wasn't clear. It should be.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. How much money are we talking about? Is there some sort of an appropriation linked to the vote that we're going to be taking?
Thirty-nine, yeah.
Forty grand.
Forty grand. Okay. Does anyone know offhand?
The housing trust fund.
And does anyone know how, offhand, how much we've already spent on the, on the linkage study? What?
About 25,000.
About 25,000. Okay. No, I, I mean, I think the discussion has made clear the dilemma that we face right now. I think it has to do in large part with markets for development and, and timing and markets for development change. And if people can think back to the bygone days of the seaport as a bunch of parking lots, and then what happened? It was during that period of just rampant, rapid development.
It was during that period of just rampant um rapid development, um intense development. Office development of the Seaport, that a lot of people looked at that and said. Boy, um we'd like to get a piece of that kind of action where you can, you know, add a fifteen percent linkage fee. Um on top of, because these there's developers out there who um they'll pay it, you know? They're so anxious to develop these these available sites now, they'll pay it. Uh and for a while. Uh you know, we were looking at the the bid to do something with the ten Brookline Place property. Um and uh for at the very beginning of of that initiative in Brookline. Uh the idea of lab development was hot. Um and it began to rapidly cool. As soon as we started to look at the possibility to get some intense development there and a linkage, some sort of linkage payment from it. Um and now the headlines are all about people who are abandoning their plans for lab development. So sure, we didn't, you know, we didn't move uh very quickly. We didn't move quickly at all. Where where linkage fees were concerned. Uh we may have completely missed the boat on linkage fees. Maybe we're not gonna see any kind of. Proposals for, you know, uh development in Brookline that would be so attractive to the developer that they'd be willing to pay linkage fees. On the other hand, what's at risk? Forty thousand dollars to complete a study. That will give us an informed answer and not just a seat of the pants answer to what do we do now, you know? And that answer could change over time. It could be that, you know, when this study is complete, the answer is at this time. In this market, with what you have available, you're not gonna attract anybody if you add linkage fees. You might not attract anybody if you. Even if you don't have linkage fees. That could change, and then we would, you know, go back to this study, this work that was done, and say, it looks like the conditions are setting up. For us to maybe seriously, in one or two instances, be able to add a linkage fee to a commercial development proposal. So. For forty thousand dollars, I think we might as well finish the study.
No, I'm fine, thank you. I just wanted to uh make a closing. Uh first, I respect that you guys approved this. Before my my initial tenure, so um I was involved, and I'm not I I'm not sure what I would have done back then. Um you know, I look at. One, I'm not a, I don't think we have the type of development opportunities that the Seaport has. Or some of all, we don't have, you know, Assembly Square. Um we don't have the Seaport. We just don't have those opportunities. Um I, you know, I want to take my pompoms out and my rah 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 uh and and ask people to come and do commercial development here. Um so I I'm I'm, I think I'm not a fan of linkage fees uh at for for a commercial development at Brookline. Um and two, whatever we do, we'd still have to go do a home rule petition. Um you know, our state rep gave this long speech at town meeting recently, saying how bad home rule petitions are and uh the, you know. The burden it places on the legislature. Um and so, you know, the probability of this forty grand turning into something. Um I'm I'm not sure I want to spend forty grand just because we already spent twenty six grand. Um I think we could probably do something else that's more productive with the forty. So I think um. I won't be voting in favor. I'll give some thought as to whether I abstain or say.
Okay, great. Okay, um unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move the uh uh action. Yeah, I agree that, you know, there are a lot of issues here. Um but, you know, getting this study completed will give us the type of information that may be useful. Yeah, outside the context of a linkage study, so I'm gonna vote favorably. So with the caveats that I've uh that I have. As well as the caveats that others have expressed, I move that the select board approved. The town proceeding with phase two of the linkage nexus study to be conducted by the Economic Development and Long Term Planning Division. With the help of the linkage fee working group and Carl Efsidman Consulting Services. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh Jim, John Van Squire?
Aye.
Um Mary Moshkinazzy?
Aye.
Uh Mike Sammon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
I'm staying.
And uh chair votes aye. Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, and remember, this doesn't lock us into anything. Okay. Well, yeah, it locks us into that money out of the housing trust fund. Um so. Um, okay, town meeting date, uh last item on the agenda. And it's seven ten. Anyone believe that? Seven ten, and we're almost finished.
Don't jinx it.
I'm meeting all night. You know, you all know that. Good evening, everyone. Uh you should have in your packets a draft schedule um for town meeting. Just a few things um that are a little bit different from um prior years to note. Uh we have a new uh deadline for the opening and closing of the warrant. So um prior to um this change. This is the first town meeting that this is affecting. Uh we used to have seventy five days before the start of town meeting to have the opening and closing of the warrant. And now that's ninety days. So what that means is that the warrant is opening a little bit um a little bit earlier than normal. So we're gonna be looking to open the warrant on January twenty fifth. Uh and then uh based on having a town meeting date of May twenty eighth. Uh that means that the warrant will be closing on Wednesday, February twenty eighth. Um so those are um, that's a new adjustment to the schedule. Um and given that the um. Given that requirement has shifted a little bit and that we would have a town meeting with a new moderator. Um the twenty eighth was chosen just to give a little extra week between the election and the actual town meeting warrant. Um so with that, we would have town meeting on the twenty eighth. Obviously, the schedule for town meeting is determined by town meeting. Um we've set forth consecutive night schedules. I know I've. Received feedback from the current moderator and assistant moderator on whether or not we want to propose um to town meeting consecutive evenings. Or do the every other, which is what we've kind of traditionally done in the spring. Uh I think it's probably good just to set aside those dates in order to reserve the high school so that we have the flexibility to, you know. Go either or. Um so based on that. Schedule, we are looking at a combined report deadline of May ninth, which is Thursday. It would be at noon. Um so just looking for the board to take action on the proposed schedule. And happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I have a question, Bernard. He's muted.
Yeah, sorry. Uh any questions from the select board or comments?
I have I have a quick question. Uh Melissa, thank you. Um so uh the six days are are on the schedule. God forbid, what would happen if we had to go a seventh? Does it need to be, do we have to have a date scheduled now? Uh what would happen in that case?
So when I did send this out, the moderator um said, well, I would add three more days to that schedule.
I suggested the eleventh.
So I, you know, I think we can reserve as many days as we need to at the high school. Um.
But I guess I just legally, Melissa, I'm asking, if if we get to that sixth day and we're not concluded with our business, can we legally? Hold another day?
Yes.
You can, okay.
Yeah. Setting expectations and then also making sure that the rooms are available at the high school as well.
Okay.
And after June, they they will be available, is is right.
Well, I think that we that after you set the schedule tomorrow, we're gonna reach out and make sure that we can get these dates. And then obviously, we'll need to adjust if we have any conflicts. Um but I will say, Paul, the one thing that we need to ensure is that we conclude town meeting by June thirtieth. Because we need a budget in place by then.
The last day of school uh is June seventeenth, if there are no snow days.
Yeah, and and by the way, that's not a um an idle uh comment by Melissa, remember a few years ago? We we uh were trying to get town meeting concluded by midnight on the thirtieth.
Right. How many, how many days was uh annual town meeting last year? How many nights? Was it six?
Last year?
Yeah.
Six.
It was six, so it's not unheard of for us to bump it to six. So I wonder if maybe just for uh for out of respect for the. The high school, and also to set the expectation that, guys, if we if we can't get it done in six nights, we'd have to go into the eleventh. Do we want to reserve the eleventh as a just in case?
I think what we can do is kind of split the difference. We can call the high school and ensure that that is an available date, try and put it on blackout. But also make clear that the expectation is two weeks. Yeah, so we can try and set expectations accordingly for the community. We can obviously work with whoever the moderator is. If there's an immediate, if there's a feeling after the warrant closes, like, oh, my goodness, we need, we 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 should be expecting seven or eight days, and we can do that. Bernard, if I may, just can I jump in on one additional thing? Thanks. I just want to say as part of this discussion. In terms of practical matters, um we're setting this early because of the warrant, of the bylaw. That now requires that ninety day advance notice, as we talked about, which, you know, great, we have this, they have this opportunity to start a little earlier. But that means the warrant opens earlier and the warrant closes earlier. It closes in budget season. Um really in the thick of preparations for the budget book on both the town and school side. Schools tend to run a little ahead of the town on this. But I do want to be just clear to folks who are considering warrant articles. If you have not yet reached out to town departments. Which who would be potentially charged with implementing your warrant article or would otherwise be impacted by your warrant article, the time to do that is now. Um please, please, please reach out. If you're not sure who to reach out to, you can always email myself, ccarrie@brooklineamay.gov. And I can route you accordingly. Melissa, Devin, any of us in the select board office can route you accordingly to the person or people. Who can help you. The sooner we know about what it is you would like to do, the sooner we can help you try and figure out. The best way to accomplish that, or we could tell you, for example, we already do that. If you would like us to do it differently, we can come up with, maybe we come up with a way that isn't a warrant article. Um but, you know, this is all about in the service of making sure that your warrant article is the best it can be and solves the problem you want it to solve. So to the extent you think there may be an impact on town operations from your warrant article, if it's not a resolution about a particularly political matter. Please reach out. We really want it. We're here to help you. Uh and we want to make sure that this process moves as smoothly as possible. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. So any other discussion? Okay, so so we have the option of um of um adding additional days. So long as we meet forty eight day or forty eight hour requirement uh at the time that we need it. Um so we don't need to add or change the proposed schedule. Um so I call, I I more approval of the schedule as presented to us um by Melissa. Uh of the uh 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 spring town meeting and related uh items.
The opening and closing of the warrant, that's that's the thing you're sending tonight.
I'm sorry, the opening and closing of the warrant, uh scheduling of town meeting and all the other uh items on the agenda. I mention that because it includes uh the select board's review of uh warrants and um. Okay, so uh all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh John Van Squire?
Aye.
Uh Mary Moshkinazzy?
Aye.
Mike Sammon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
So far as I can tell, that concludes our meeting. I don't see anything else on the agenda. Am I correct, Devin?
You're correct.
Okay, just kidding. Um, okay, thank you. Uh that ends our meeting and uh thank you for everyone who participated. Uh in the audience.